A amendment was issued to staff that Betsy drafted and that went to staff lending of it in May. We have three paychecks in May. So that'll give the employees time to plan, you know, so they're used to that timeframe. They'll have to plan, they'll get three weeks of pay and then they'll have to go without getting that paycheck immediately. Ideally, I'd like to go with two weeks, but you know, it is what it is. We just have to make the adjustment where we're stingraying for a senior. So like I said, we are doing some things already that were on the, that we saw. Some of the community has been assisting to start that kind of support. Done as far as words go, we've already got the unit code and.
This report is actually, we actually, we will go with a copy of it. If you just come into the hall and ask about our legislative request, uh, we will probably talk about it. We will be able to answer any questions now. Uh, we did have a, um, we talked about this before. So if you want to get a copy of this, we might talk a little bit later. But, uh, if you want to get a copy of it, uh, in the, uh, next, we'll be able to, we'll be able to answer questions. I like to answer questions, uh, about this. We are working on it. Uh, unfortunately, it's legislated here, so, uh, they are giving us back. We have to do that, still have to go through, which we are doing for big cities, Austin, Houston, Dallas, Charlotte. There are a lot of these legislative changes, uh, but they got the money, I mean, so, but it affects us too. So, but we still have to be prepared, uh, with whatever comes down the line, uh, you know, later on this year. So, uh, again, this report is open. If you guys want a copy of it, just come by City Hall and Sal has a form there that you can fill out and, uh, we can give you a copy. We're gonna go ahead and if we don't have any more discussion on that, we'll move on to a discussion and action item. Uh, item A, discuss, consider and take action to approve the minutes of the flanning and zoning hearings held January 4th. January 5th, January 7th, and the election, uh, held on January 4th. Uh, no, it's, uh, it's actually, um, uh, this week, that it was actually, uh, commercial. It was never agriculture. Uh, it was residential outside city limits at one point and then, uh, it went to commercial. So it was actually never agriculture, um, as we, I guess we just kinda thought it was because.
We did have maps that showed it for some reason, but that was from 2012 and then 2013, there were some changes made. And then the tax appraisers, they have different records too, but also show commercial. Uh, so anyway, it's, uh, it's something we need to get back to, make sure we're on the same page. Yeah, I like to amend my motion. I like to amend my motion. January 7th, also January 7th with no.
Uh, face one. Item B, uh, discuss, consider and take action to ratify an amendment to Lake Texana. I have a motion by Councilman Candela. To ratify amendment to Lake Texana. Uh, I really didn't even notice that, I mean, we actually have a water line that comes all the way from Lake Texana.
It's basically the Maryville Road Pipeline and, uh, the pipeline falls on the city.
That's located outside, uh, every part of the, uh, still has areas.
No, it's further up.
To ratify an amendment to Lake Texana Water Pipeline Project. Place one, place three, place four, place five. Consider and take action to approve the zoning change, new zoning. By Councilman Lox. Given the city of Austin, it changes. District to R and D, the district, and the law, the voting. Property to be described as a property designated for sale by the county. Second Street, down to 2221 and described as 25.39 acres. Yeah, if you want a cannon, maybe you can. Since it's not so much what it's coming from, it's what it's going to. So I have a motion by Councilman Falcone to, uh, to approve the zoning change, um, second by Councilman Candela. There is no more discussion, go ahead and move on. For both, place one, place three, place four, place five. Uh, item G, discuss, consider and take action to approve the development agreement provided by Councilman Lox for the development of the new Flag Star. The property located in Southside, East End, East Street, in 2221 and described as 45.39 acres. To approve. I have a motion by Councilman Wirth, that's our second. Second by Councilman Dominguez, uh, made discussion.
I'm grateful for all the contributions that council members have made to guide me through the process at these, uh, the developers and all of this. We're excited to be here. We're gonna get a new park essentially out of it, so.
And I really appreciate that. I knew that we discussed that in our first kind of luncheon that we had and that was important. I felt that that was important for that side of our community to have a place that we as a city can put a part. I think you guys have worked with us on this, so I'm really excited, uh, to that. I think I already have people sitting, we can put a football field, we can put a soccer field. They're already making plans for the three acres. Yeah. It'd be a nice place for Easter, you know, for to gather on Easter holidays. We might have to be a little bit of luxury, so we are actually talking about, uh, if we have any questions, uh, we will. Well, I assume, so you could be making a bit of a use of your own there, we could all be there, we could maybe cut the cake or something, you know. Cut the grass. We can start shovel in a little dirt for you while we're there. Same text, should have pointed. Just said Randy had. Excited to work with y'all.
Involving a lot of these builds that are coming through, whether it's outside, property.
Well, I appreciate it, thank you. And yeah, I mean, it's difficult, but we have these, uh, lobbying for some of these legislative changes, uh, because they affect us as well. I mean, not just as a city, but as a county and, uh, we don't have the resources, you know, Travis County or Austin County or Houston or Dallas. And, uh, we get stuff, uh, in bills, you know, um. We'll definitely be trying to, you know, voice our good, we're gonna get over there and choose where you're gonna be pulling our sand factory public there. Represented by, uh, what the Senator is, it's kind of, uh. But, you know, I'll make contact with him and hopefully he'll be together. Well, thank you guys, we're gonna go ahead and move on and we're, we're really excited, let us know. Me too. I have a new discussion, consider and take action to approve, uh, the order of elections for municipal offices. Got a motion by Councilman Falcone, second by Councilman Dominguez. Now we'll move to discussion. All right, Sal, if you want to explain this.
It is the order that goes to the county clerk or, excuse me, the elections administration of San Francisco County. So what you originally got, uh, the form had changed, so what you have in your. Uh, I did speak with the ISD, uh, this today, um, and what, I think, I'm trying to be able to help, uh, rack me up, fill me back as I go along. It's my first election, uh, and she's been instrumental in guiding me in what we need to be doing, you know, to be more efficient with running these elections. So, uh, with this being said, this is, uh, this is a new, a newer form, uh, in conjunction, to work in conjunction with the ISD. So make sure that there's no overlap in time and also so that we're not stuck with a full day of taking, of expenses, just to share the burden with ISD. Uh, we've come up with a new schedule, um, and that is basically April 22nd and 28th, operate seven to seven. So that we allow, there's times people that come in after work if they do work till five and then stay from eight to five, uh, April 23rd, 24th, 25th and 29th. Uh, and then I wanted to just get some education, you know, there's no indication of the seven to seven for election day. Is that assumed basically, is that just standard protocol? Right, so if you don't see seven to seven on there for the election day, it's basically assumed, uh, because it is standard, it is standard for election day. Uh, so we would have all places, uh, on the ballot, uh, for election and then also the proposition, which is the reauthorization of local sales taxes. And the city will make a rate of one half of one percent to continue providing revenue for the maintenance and repair of municipal streets. That's what I pulled off the stuff that we had in the office.
But is that correct?
Yeah, we, I can, we can verify that.
Cause you know, that's gonna be in the ballot if it's some.
Well, this, this was based, this was pulled off the, uh, the, we pulled this off the ordinance that you passed last week, so.
Just to make sure it's, you know. So, uh, for us to continue to do it this way, we don't have to take any money out of our general fund.
There is still a chance that the school may not have an election.
So that we don't have an election.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that's just. Of course, you know, like with. This is what they would wanna do, uh, and then consulting with Penn, Penn Brewer, uh, you know, this is. Time because we'll be open seven to seven the entire time and we have, uh, you know.
It's a run for school board.
Do you want to start with your copy? Have a, okay, I have a clean copy here.
If you're right, I haven't read it. So we, we've got, have a, um, motion to take action to approve the order of elections for municipal offices. Um, and we have a second, so we'll move with a vote, place one, place three, place four, place five. And now we're sound, right?
Yes.
It doesn't matter right here, is this anyone, anyone?
So it's from the topic of the election, the next, uh, item for the city is to set up a public forum for, uh, once everyone has filed and who's running for what. Then we'll do a drawing, uh, at that point to see who's on the order of the ballot. And then after that, I think I've done that one. Until election day, until election day, yeah.
Sounds like church. Go ahead and give the whole packet. Thank you. And good evening.
Thank you.
Give the little packet. All right, move on to item F, discuss, consider and take action to accept an engagement that provides services and services provided by Roald Fernandez, EPA and Roald Fernandez, and. To the company of an audit for the fiscal year 21.
Well, because last year, because last year we spent, I think it was, you know, it's like one hundred fifty-six.
Level motion. Motion by Councilman Dominguez, I have a second. And this was talking about the funds that come out of the sales tax that goes into the street maintenance fund. You can fix potholes all day, you can actually resurface the road. Continue to be a problem, so. Oh yeah, we have a model, yeah. I think we can get three miles done and hopefully before the summer, I mean, I think the weather's, and then after that we just start looking at maybe doing, maybe trying to do maybe about six miles, maybe for the whole year, I mean, I think that, I don't know how many miles of road we have. So that'll come out of that. There you go. Yeah, so let's hear what the grand...
I think the last number I remember was a two percent. And their meeting on the twentieth, I, that's what, reminded me, let me know, so. She's appointed, but I wasn't here last time you were appointed, so I'm not sure.
She's got appointed this under... Your dad was here. It was too late, they were different. Monday was...
Yeah, we, yeah.
So once you get the streets and you get to say, you do ten days, ten days. Yeah.
No, I think, I party, we party, we party. Place three, place four. Item H. A, discuss, consider and take action. For the secret. The resolution reads as follows, a resolution of the city of... Economic Development Corporation, recommendation to provide seventy thousand dollars to DSA to serve the term trees in the city central park and to provide up to a hundred and ninety thousand for upgrades. The stadium lights at the Little League park. So we'll just go ahead and discuss like that. I was talking, I was talking to you for a second, item A, place one, place three, place four, place five. Motion carries, item B, especially to make... Option, have a question? Motion by Councilman Dominguez, I have a second. And how, discussion, I think we have some pictures, right? We do, I just want to kind of touch base. The, I don't know, seventy some information made yesterday or this morning, I can't remember, it's all running together for me. It actually, the estimated equipment cost came out at one seventy-five, see who's going to do some magic and help us out. And then of course, the financing is pretty cut and dry and he can explain more, but I just want to introduce it, so basically it's eighty-seven thousand.
Right. One seventy-five. Yes, right, exactly. Yeah, the total cost is gonna be one estimate of... Yeah. Yeah. And, yes, and we do have a slideshow he'll be presenting.
Yeah, I just...
You want to introduce yourself?
I'm Nathan Musco.
Well Nathan, I know before you start, we talked about this at the beginning of the budget, we wanted to try to help the Little League out, we've been trying to, I know it is a city park and I know that, you know, it's sometimes you struggle trying to get volunteers to do things, so the city wanted to kind of play a more active role forward, so this is the start of it and this lighting system's pretty amazing, I think, so.
Let me put something there, also, we were just talking, they do own the other lights, and it's easier for them to do the... That's what we need to do with this. Stand by, sir, stand by, stand by, don't get excited, stand by, we're good there.
Yeah, I mean, so I just put together some pictures. Just so you guys kind of see how your field would look like, as you can see by this picture, two fields, this glowy glare stuff, our system is unmatched, I mean, you can just see everything that's not seen is lit up, so.
We had complaints in the past where sometimes the light's wrong and we landed to the evening and some residents were complaining, hey, the little lights are still on, they're coming from our bedroom window and we, this system here, as you saw, it's back to the other you know, I started, I can tell you about this.
Yeah, so like...
It's just something, it doesn't go very far, so just a few of them, you know.
Yeah, and then just kind of show them glare better, you know, you can look at them, you know, glare like you could have that on a car. So it's all, all the lights just go down. This is what our light car looks like with our LED fixture up there, so this is all the components, we've got the end of our system, it's in concrete base, just so we're not putting direct area ceiling to the ground, it protects the pole, it's not a problem and then you got, you got your galvanize steel pole and then we put all our... So you don't have to do any sort of maintenance up on top, they're all just there. That's now, and our system, we would only ever ask... Anything else, you... Yep, our, yeah, our warranty is twenty-five years, parts only. Yep, yep, that's the only thing, we have predictability. Again, this is another picture, this is...
They are gonna light up those two, we're gonna have a light facing them, so they're good, everybody's gonna be lit up.
Yep.
So the field towards the end, right, the...
Kind of in right field, or?
Kind of in left field, so.
Kind of in left field, sorry.
So all the fields are gonna be lit up?
Except...
I was talking to some of the Little League officers and they're saying that they understood only one field's gonna get lit up.
No, the only one that's not, there's only one field that's not gonna be lit up and that's the old high school field, not, I mean, we're, that's kind of down the line, we'll look at lighting that one up, but the old...
The old high school field, that used to have lights, don't have no lights no more?
No, the poles were rotting away, so we had to remove the poles, so our goal is at some point to bring them in again to, I guess, there's a way to redirect lights from, cause I think you guys are gonna add three?
Yeah, so for this one, we're gonna be putting in three poles and then you guys have an existing pole that we're gonna, we call it a common pole, so we're gonna keep the lights that are on the reg, on the front side, we're just putting lights on the back side of it, our LED lights, so that saves you guys a pole instead of having to get four brand new poles, you only have to get three of them.
The softball field's never gonna have no lights, so they're not gonna be able to play softball, right?
Girls.
No, they won't be able to play.
They're moving the softball field to the old softball field, it used to be a culture field, moving that one to the softball field now, it's gonna get light.
Right.
They never had light before, so that one can get light and the one that, the old high school field, they're gonna say use it, but they're not gonna be able to play.
Yeah, they said they only play good day games on that one for now, but the little, the T-ball fields in the back and then that one field at the end where the curve, yeah, those will be all lit up, so, you know, so it's gonna be a nice, nice setup. And we're looking forward to it, you know, we got a lot to do with the Little League in the future, so I think this is gonna be a good start for us.
Time frame, Mayor, we're looking at, probably have a public hearing. Time frame, Mayor, we're looking at, probably have a public hearing probably next week sometime, or maybe?
I think, um, we're looking at this Saturday and if everything went well, I could get it posted tonight. That way we can hold the meeting on Saturday as opposed to the public hearing. And then, uh, we have to wait 60 days.
60 days for financing.
Wait 60 days before we can do any kind of expenditures. Right, and then, uh, I think we, I think we said six, six weeks maybe? Or, uh, is it what time, was it, is it your turn around, like, once you get payment to get the materials?
We'd have it by, yeah, about six weeks, four to six weeks, I would say, we can get it there.
So, we're looking maybe early May, mid-May, full installation, if everything goes smoothly?
Yep.
So, I, I guess that we just have to make sure that everyone can come, we have a majority or, uh, that's the question is, do you, you need a, a quorum for a public hearing? Not for a public hearing. So, as long as you have some city representatives, at least two.
I'll be here.
Well, I'll be here, because, uh, we're going to be meeting with some of the folks from the I-69 corridor also on Saturday.
I was thinking 15 minutes before we give a public hearing, you get a mic.
Yeah.
You know when their season starts?
When does season start, pick it?
It starts in March, this March, it starts in March.
So regardless, it was going to?
It's going to be for next year, it'll be for next year. Because it starts in March, it ends in May.
I thought, I thought they started in?
May, but they have, sometimes they have like leagues, some summer league type things.
Well, there's winter league, we do winter ball, there's?
You have All-Stars.
Yeah, we go into All-Stars, but usually All-Stars is always held in other cities, because we can never, oh, here.
Well.
We did one year.
We're going to try to bring that back. It was, uh, Odom was always the place to have All-Star Games. I know you guys remember, people used to come here to play because we had the best field. So, we're going to work on, on getting some of these All-Star Games played over here, uh, later on, you know?
It'll be great for Wonder Ball, I mean.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
There's always a loophole where the city can pay for it. Now, if it gets denied, the city eats it. But you can always do that.
That was my question.
Well, we can do that, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think nobody's going to oppose. I think the public's going to come in and say, I don't want it. We're still going to have it now. For 90 days and all that, I mean, 60 days. We can still do all that, but for them to get the ball rolling. Because you, you can already start like now, right?
Pretty much. We can, yeah, we just need?
Or we get the money, we, we could, we're just getting? Can we get, can we find 90,000, 187,500?
From the city side? Uh, real quick, so when we first talked about this, we were talking about the financing was cut and dry and I didn't city's history and, you know, audits and stuff like that. But on this particular document, it does say required information is included in the audit of financial statements, tax returns, six months. Is that still an issue?
I can?
We're putting down that money, we're putting down that much money, it's a large, it's 50% down payment.
Right.
I feel, I mean, that's how, that's how it was presented to us, was that we didn't do all that, as long as you're going to do this, we're financing directly for you.
Right.
You should be able to.
I'll go with that. I'll, uh, I'll get you to address that.
So, uh, if you have any more questions, um, we're going to move forward on, um?
And it, so this is all basically contingent on financing still?
Financing, correct.
Right, yes.
So, on item B, uh, we have a, uh, a motion to approve resolution 637 for the Odom Economic Development to provide up to $190,000 to upgrade the stadium lights at the Little League Park. And is this contingent on financing, uh, place one?
Yes.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
Yes.
Place five?
Yes.
Quick, you, you'll know by the public hearing, correct? By the end of the week, you'll know on that statement?
Yes.
Is there a rush to have it? I mean, we're kind of getting it done, like, but I'm just saying, like, now that we know it's not starting in May, we're going to miss the opening season.
The quicker the better.
I think the quicker is better.
Yeah, because then, you know, at least the kids can practice on the lights.
So, we can, we're, we're okay for, uh, the Saturday the 8th for the public hearing? At 9:30, 9:15, what do you want to do? 9:30?
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Councilman, uh, the upcoming team, regional. We're going to have TML, 11, that's, uh?
February 28th?
Yes, sir.
Like I said, focus it on legislation.
All right, um. We haven't put any water pumps in, online yet. Well, engineers, uh, they didn't consider the fact that, uh, if we were motors, the system was designed three pumps at the same time. It's one pump. We're going to figure out, you know? Kind of will tell you how many hours it's run and then we can switch it to one or the other. We'll shut pump one down and turn one. And start up pump three, but we will never, uh, the way it's set up right now, we, we'll never have two pumps running at the same time, because it'll shut the system down. Uh, now, the, the company that developed or built the system is going to come out and look at at a lower end. He said, you know what, that doesn't sound too far off. He said, I can't share that with you right now. Their client, uh, reaching out to us. So, I just wanted to keep you all in the loop. I mean, if a little over a million dollars, it would
Is that my edge, Mr.?
Sure, yeah. Outside of town.
Didn't we talk about this, 1988? No.
Yeah, that's what they're looking for, looking close to the ground. They said they need this basically Yeah, out in Gregory and Inglewood Side, it's just like, uh, 70,000 acres. I would just like give it somewhere in that range. That's, um? Well, when I, when I gave him the thing, I said, well, I know that, and I just basically, and I just, uh, discussed with him, I said, I know that land around, you know, Gregory and then there's selling for about 70,000 an acre. I said, um, so we'd probably be somewhere around there, I think, maybe? And then I said, you know, anywhere probably between 60 and 70,000. And he said, okay, he sounded kind of like, okay, yeah, let me talk to, to my client and see what they want to do. So, like, yeah, he wasn't like, oh, man. So, you know, um, the city was in touch with the client and we tried to get that, you know? Later, I'll probably just try to reach out to them maybe here in the next month or so, to see if they're, if they're interested. Uh, item D, Interstate 69 bypass, uh, I don't know how many folks went out to the, uh, uh, presentation, I guess, or open house. There was a lot, I talked to a lot of people, uh, a lot of the, the citizens, uh, they had, a lot of them had some pretty good ideas. I don't know if tech stop, I'm just trying to, kind of considering any of them, but I kind of talked to a lot of people while I was there. They had some really good ideas, um, that they thought wouldn't, wouldn't, uh, affect as many citizens. And the engine, the tech stop folks that were there seemed to be kind of letting talking and discussing, like, talked about the flood plain that's out there. So, I just basically, I said, you know what? Maybe we should all get together, just us, the community, um, and share some ideas, so we can put a letter together as a community to present to our representative and say, hey, look, you know, this is from all of us. And maybe we could send something to the community, people, this is how we feel that it's going to affect us. Um, I did reach out to the community, to be there to, to, to all of you today, to study, to all that. So, we have to come and do, study, discuss, you know? So, at least we have something in mind. And, um, so we're going to come in on Saturday, uh, probably from 9:00 to 11:00, just a couple of hours. So, we, we're going to have a workshop for our, uh, public hearing, we can do it before that. Um, perhaps meet here at the library with those folks, uh, and just try to share some, some ideas, maybe put together something that we can put to our representatives and, and let them know that you, we as a a good solution. The state will make the decision what they want to do, I mean, just like everything else, so, uh, but at least we're going to go down, uh, without being hurt, so, all right? Motion by Councilman Wurta, and second by Councilman Dominguez, we are adjourned.